All right, colleagues. Good morning. We're back in session. I'm second reading on Bill number 11-36. When we left off, Senator Taitiwi, you had the floor, and you are now recognized.
Good morning, Madam Speaker and my colleagues. Thank you so much for allowing me a little bit more time to get prepared. Madam Speaker, I'm here speaking on Bill 1136, COR is amended. And we left off where I asked for the recessed because we received a letter from the administration, actually from three different agencies. So I submitted the letter to the clerk for the upload for my colleagues to also be able to review. Madam Speaker, you know, it's ironic because, you know, we are three different branches. There are three branches of government. But the one thing that we all have in common is that we answer to the same people, we answer to the same community on Guam. And it was said by one of my colleagues that the legislature itself is unique because we are the people's house. This is the opportunity for people, constituents, to come to us and ask us for questions because they find it too difficult at some of the other branches of government. And we try our very best to give them those answers. You know, Madam Speaker, it was, I think, I want to say about in August or September, where this same type of bill, through a resolution, actually was pushed out in social media and placing all of the Republicans' names on it to push forward on it. And at the time, thinking that our Magahaga was starting to, things are starting to get a little bit better, things are starting to opening up, then it didn't happen. And today, we're still sitting here with so many unanswered questions. Especially the executive orders, Madam Speaker. The executive orders that were proffered by the administration. Particularly, Section 4 of the Executive Order 2020-13, May 28, 2020, waives requirements for the open government law, including requirements such as for an agency meeting to be open to the public. That was a waiver. These are waivers, Madam Speaker, for the public notices of meetings to be issued, for public notice of special meetings to be issued, for public notices on meetings adjournment to be published, for actions of meeting to be voided after noncompliance with open government law, establishments of penalties for noncompliance. And a lot of things, what is the basis for these wavering, these important requirements of open government law which promotes transparency in the government? What does COVID have to do with suspending these rights that are afforded to residents? These are questions that we need to be answered. Remember the regular press briefings for COVID-19 updates for senators? What happened to the press briefings Adalou provided on a regular basis, which offered residents and media organizations the latest information on various COVID-19-related questions? You know, it seemed so long ago when that happened, and it's no longer available to us. You remember those? We all glued ourselves to our laptops and watched online to see the latest information. Well, those stopped. Aside from meeting back in March of 2020, and perhaps a couple of meetings with Adalou via Zoom thereafter, we haven't seen senators been briefed on a regular basis. How can we, as senators, respond to questions and concerns from residents if we ourselves are not getting information from Adalou and other decision-makers? Senators can't even get complete and timely information on local and federal expenditures related to COVID-19 as required by Public Law 35-86, which the legislature had to force through an override of the governor's veto on Bill 333. What is the status of the federal relief assistance proposals? What measures should we consider as we face revenue shortfalls with our tourism industries still closed and future federal aid uncertain? These are so many questions, Madam Speaker. What is the governor so worried about having senators and members of the public gaining access to expenditure information and considerations that are made before these decisions are finalized? It's before then that we should be involved and engaged. But we're not. Bring senators to the table before you make a decision. Don't tell us only after you've taken action. We too have to answer to the people of Guam. Why are game rooms, bingo halls, amusement parks open and not bars? Particularly those establishments that follow guidelines from public health experts? And let me repeat that. Particularly those establishments that followed the guidelines of public health. Why is Guam not following the CDC's requirement of seven to 10 days quarantine recommendations when we're still at 14? Why are people who may not be considered high-risk or outside the approved age group not receiving the vaccines now? These are so many questions that we have senators, not only us, but our constituents, the community, is asking for. We need to be a part of this. That's what this legislation does. It allows this body to be a part of it, the people's house. You know, it's, you know, don't tell us what's going to happen. Work with senators and listen to our ideas and feedbacks as you develop plans. By cooperating with senators, by engaging us, by respecting the legislature as a coal-equal branch of government, Adalou can and will show the public that decisions aren't being made in the dark. Bring transparency to the decision-making process. It will help bring comfort to our families, to our businesses, to our frontliners, especially as we face an invisible enemy. You know, this or any other administration should never position themselves as the only ones capable of dealing with the public health emergency. Particularly one that alters nearly every aspect of life as we know it to be prior to COVID-19. Adalou is not alone in this battle against COVID-19. Because as we've heard through this pandemic, and many times, we are in this together. Madam Speaker, Bill 11 just simply allows us that engagement to add our ideas. I've had so many constituents come to my office, bringing me their ideas. But unfortunately, we can't even get Adalou to listen. And I'm not just talking about, let's bring one senator to the game, to the game plan, but all of us. This bill allows us to be a part of this. Part of the plan to get Guam back. Or part of the plan for the new norm. That's simply all what this bill does. And Madam Speaker, if this, now we received this letter just yesterday, and a letter that came out just a few days ago from the governor. Now they're reacting? No, 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 don't do this. Why? Why not? And while you're answering that "why" on all those other questions that I mentioned earlier, give us those answers. Like I said, Madam Speaker, give us comfort, give this community comfort. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity for me to speak on Bill 11-36. And I ask my colleagues to please consider that. Let's be a part of this. As it was mentioned, we are in this together. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Is there any other senator who would like to be recognized on Bill 11-36? Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, you are recognized.
My honor, it's Madam Speaker, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on this measure. Madam Speaker, I was debating whether I should speak on this bill or not, and try and look at the merits of why this bill has come to play. And I've always believed in the statement that I said when I first became a senator after the first election of 2002. I always believed that what may have been good back then may not be so good today. But what may have been bad back then may be good today. You and I know, Madam Speaker, that one legislature never bounds another legislature, and that when a bill is introduced and goes through the process of public input, scrutiny by the body, it gets approved when it's sent up by the governor to vote a measure up or down. And one that comes to mind, Madam Speaker, is a bill that was done in December of 2002 that was debated on this August body by one, two, three governors that are still around, one colleague who's with us, and several speakers. That would, that would bring support to the community as it relates to any emergency that would affect the island as a whole. And when that measure was introduced almost, if not 19 years ago, if I believe correctly, that bill, that measure, was literally introduced by then a former governor, a speaker who's left us, and a vice speaker, all of the opposing party that I'm on. But Madam Speaker, what's even more important, on January 5 of 2003, then Governor Guterres signed the bill because he said that this measure had bipartisan support, was supported by all the members, and it would literally respond rapidly and effectively to the potential or actual public health emergencies for the common good of our people. It's funny, Madam Speaker, that we're here today to debate the same measure that was introduced and supported by all the leaders of past and present. That measure back then, 19 years ago, almost two decades, was then E.B. Calvo, A.R. Pinkel, and L.F. Casperbaugh, but supported on the floor by all the members and signed by the opposing party, then-Governor Guterres. Madam Speaker, I don't pretend to know it all because I don't really. The pandemic that we're in today, it's not just happening here, it's happening worldwide. And every day is a challenge to do right by our people. It is the people of Guam who voted for the Magahaga. Some may agree, some may not. But it was this August body back in December of 2002, supported by the Republican Party who said, "This bill, this measure must happen for the common good of our people." I present before you today, Madam Speaker, that nobody wants to be where we're at today. Every day is a challenge to our people. Every day, we have to look. Just last night, I had to try and go get a second dose of the vaccine, knowing that there may be a shortage, and knowing that people are frantic on whether, how are they going to get their Moderna or their Pfizer, or those who took Pfizer at a different hospital or clinic or village, can't go back to the same place. They now have to go to one facility because of temper controls or what have you. And every day, the government is challenged on how we can do better to get access to our people. And we're going to stop measures like that because we want them to consult, this administration to consult on every little thing that comes their way. No, but we are in a pandemic that we, yes, must come together and find resolve and solutions together. What really concerns me is what happened two decades ago is now a problem. I don't fault Governor Calvo, I don't fault the late Speaker Tony and Pinkel, and Vice Speaker Larry Casperbaugh for introducing this measure. Because they saw a vision, Madam Speaker, they saw a vision to help the administration when we are in times of trouble. Madam Speaker, what are we doing here today? Let us come together as one team, Guam, and help the main cause of our people. If I didn't see this, I would have said, you know, maybe there should be a give and take. That's why there's three branches of government, three coal-equal branches of government. This body creates legislation. The executive branch executes. And if there's a problem, you bring it to the third branch of government, which is the judiciary. Let us not play with people's lives. I want to continue to support a vision that our former leaders believed was for the common good of our community, Madam Speaker. And I really hope that my colleagues here today will look at the Bill Public Law 26-173 and know that it was the Republicans then who saw the vision to work with a Democrat governor to say, "This is one time, this is one thing that should be above all the rest," is to work in unity, in peace, and make sure that we take care of our people. So Madam Speaker, I do have concerns about this bill before us today, when I know that our past leaders really saw the vision of wanting to take care of our people. And it's not about being Democrat or Republican and about this, it's about making sure that the challenges that are before us today, that we all come together and find positive solutions. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Vice Speaker. On Bill 11-36, Senator Rangel, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I don't believe that this Bill 11 is actually necessary, and I'll explain why. If you look at the first sentence of the bill in the legislative findings and intent, it says, "Elasatur in Guam finds that the governor's exercise of authority in the declaration of a state of public health emergency pursuant to Chapter 19 of Title 10 Guam Code annotated has, as a practical matter, nullified the doctrine of the separation of powers." This first sentence in the bill is wrong. In fact, the enabling legislation that enables the governor to declare a public health emergency includes in it a provision called the termination of declaration. By a majority vote, the Guam Legislature may terminate the declaration of a state of public health emergency at any time. At any time. From the date of original declaration upon finding that the occurrence of an illness or health condition that caused the emergency does not or no longer poses a high probability of a large number of deaths in the affected population, a large number of incidents of serious permanent or long-term disability in the affected population, or a significant risk of substantial future harm to a large number of people in the affected population. Such a termination by the Guam Legislature shall override any renewal made by Imagaloh in Guam. That's separation of powers. The governor has the executive authority to issue a public health emergency declaration, and the legislature has a separate power and authority to terminate that at any time by a majority vote. So I don't see the necessity for this bill at all. In fact, I think this bill does exactly what it's attempting, what it claims that it wants to prevent in the very first sentence. In the very first sentence, it says that the governor has nullified the doctrine of separation of powers. I say it's this bill that nullifies the doctrine of separation of powers. Because the bill itself actually takes away an executive function, which is the declaration of a state of public health emergency, and gives that to the legislature. It says, "The declaration of a state of public health emergency shall be terminated automatically after 30 days unless renewed by Elasatur in Guam, not renewed by the governor with the consent of the legislature, renewed by the legislature." It gives it completely to the legislature after 30 days. It takes what's an executive function and now makes it a legislative function. This means it would be up to the legislature to put together a bill or a resolution declaring a public health emergency. Then the legislature would have to do this every 30 days. Let's take a look at this particular pandemic that's lasted, you know, in March, it'll be about a year. Imagine if this law were in effect. That means that the governor would have declared a public health emergency back in March of last year. Then after 30 days, we, the legislature, would have had to come in, debate like we are now on the floor, over whether or not we should extend the emergency every 30 days. To me, that's impractical. There's a reason why emergencies fall under executive powers. Because emergencies require swift action, not long deliberation and debate. That's why it's an executive function, so that the executive can act quickly in this, in an emergency, so that it's not bogged down by deliberations and debate which can take days, as it has with this bill. Imagine if every 30 days, we'd have to be in here arguing for days on whether or not we're going to extend the emergency, when really, it should just be extended, and then if anyone really has a problem with it, introduce a at any time by a majority vote. So I don't see the necessity for this bill at all. In fact, I think this bill does exactly what it's attempting, what it claims that it wants to prevent in the very first sentence. In the very first sentence, it says that the governor has nullified the doctrine of separation of powers. I say it's this bill that nullifies the doctrine of separation of powers. Because the bill itself actually takes away an executive function, which is the declaration of a state of public health emergency, and gives that to the legislature. It says, "The declaration of a state of public health emergency shall be terminated automatically after 30 days unless renewed by Illes et Guahein, not renewed by the governor with the consent of the legislature, renewed by the legislature." It gives it completely to the legislature after 30 days. It takes what's an executive function and now makes it a legislative function. This means it would be up to the legislature to put together a bill or a resolution declaring a public health emergency. Then the legislature would have to do this every 30 days. Let's take a look at this particular pandemic that's lasted, you know, in March, it'll be about a year. Imagine if this law were in effect. That means that the governor would have declared a public health emergency back in March of last year. Then after 30 days, we, the legislature, would have had to come in, debate like we are now on the floor over whether or not we should extend the emergency every 30 days. To me, that's impractical. There's a reason why emergencies fall under executive powers. Because emergencies require swift action, not long deliberation and debate. That's why it's an executive function, so that the executive can act quickly in this, in an emergency. So that it's not bogged down by deliberations and debate, which can take days, as it has with this bill. Imagine if every 30 days, we'd have to be in here arguing for days on whether or not we're going to extend the emergency, when really, it should just be extended. And then if anyone really has a problem with it, introduce a resolution or a bill to terminate the public health emergency. Then we can debate that. Meanwhile, the executive function is preserved. The executive branch has extended the emergency. They're able to continue doing it. And if we really, really have a problem with it, terminate it. But no one has done so. Not throughout the entire course of this pandemic. No one in this legislature has done so. To be fair, this is a new legislature. But there are many people that have returned. But for those new members of this new legislature, they have the exact same option. They can introduce something to terminate the public health emergency. And then there would be the same ability for the public to weigh in on that termination of the public health emergency. Then we can hear from everyone in the public, same way that it's been argued. So again, for me, I, I think this bill is unnecessary. There's already something in the code that allows us to terminate a public health emergency. Bring everyone in front of us. We can, if that's what other lawmakers want here, my colleagues want, call for the termination. Put, put, put in a bill or a resolution to terminate it. And then you can bring all the agencies forward and have them, you know, argue for why it's needed. Bring all the members out of the public forward to argue why it should be terminated, et cetera. And it would preserve the executive branch function. And preserve our powers. And preserve the doctrine of the separation of powers. You know, if we go down this route, you know, how far do you want to take it? Do we want to make it now so that the legislature should declare a natural disaster? Of course not. That's an executive function, again. In fact, the previous administration had declared numerous natural disasters. And I recall, at the time, I was a reporter in the news. And I remember there were a couple of typhoons. There weren't really typhoons. In fact, they were just heavy rain events. But the previous administration declared a natural disaster and got FEMA funding for it. More power to them. But no one dared say, hey, why, why are we declaring a natural disaster for this? This was just rain. You know, there were no downed power lines, no damage. I don't even think the power went out in one of those storms or rain heavy rain events. So why is it now such a big issue? Again, especially when anyone can put forth a resolution or a bill to terminate this. So for me, I have to vote against this bill because I think it's unnecessary. Again, if anyone wants to end the, end the public health emergency in the legislature, they can do so with a majority vote. This would actually just create more red tape. It would bog down the process even further. It would make it difficult for the executive branch to execute. And finally, Madam Speaker, I'd just like to note for the record that the sponsors, the primary sponsors of this Bill 11 are also the primary sponsors of Bill Number 15, which would put a referendum to the people of Guam for a part-time legislature. So I'd just like to say for the record that I'd like to thank the sponsors of Bill 11 for providing evidence to us that truly in their hearts, they believe that we need a full-time legislature so that we can come back every 30 days to approve the extension of a public health emergency. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On Bill 11, is there anyone else who would like to be recognized? Vice Speaker?
I will recognize Majority Leader Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I have amendment that I would like to proffer. And the clerks can upload it now.
I apologize, Vice, Major Leader, I didn't hear what you said.
I have a proffer that I'd like to, I have an amendment that I'd like to proffer, and the clerks can upload it now.
Thank you. Does my colleagues have it all? It is L710P2. Does everybody have that? If anybody doesn't have it, can you let me know at this time? If not, I will allow the Majority Leader to proceed. You may proceed, Senator Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I have a question for the sponsor of the bill.
Please, please state your question.
Does the sponsor of the bill believe that 30 days in the midst of a healthcare pandemic, that 30 days is enough time for the administration to act and request a renewal of executive order?
Thank you.
And the reason why I ask that question, Madam Speaker, is because it's very easy for us to stand and criticize everything that has happened in the past. Because we see the impacts of every decision that has occurred in the past. So we can, we can all say there are some areas that, where decisions were made that we did not agree on. But what is fairly new is that it usually takes about three months to get about over them to control this kind of emergency. And so here we have that the state of public health emergency shall be terminated automatically after 30 days unless renewed by Illes et Guahein. And so that means that if you look at the timeline of things, if we have another, God forbid, if we have another pandemic in our hands and we have to start all over from the beginning, after 30 days, whoever the governor is at that time, will have to come to the legislature in the midst of all the, the chaos, in the, in the height of all of the challenges, in the height of all of the sufferings. Each agency dealing with the pandemic will have to come here to the legislature before the 30-day mark in order to get approval for a renewal. And so this amendment that I'm proffering, Madam Speaker, is, is, is to change that 30 days to 90 days. And so I asked the sponsor of the bill if he feels that he believes that at the height of another pandemic, that 30 days is sufficient amount of time for all of the government agencies to maintain safety and protection of the community and gives them enough time to establish a battle rhythm moving forward.
Thank you. Senator Chris, would you like to answer that question?
Yes, I very much so would like to answer that question, Madam Speaker, and I will proceed if allowed to do so. Madam Speaker, I know exactly what the mover of this question and this amendment is asking and discussing. And I got to say that I deeply appreciate it. You know, in sports, they call it Monday morning quarterback. Where my good colleague hails from outside of the legislature in her question, which I greatly appreciate, battle rhythm. The ability to, to mobilize, to get things done, and the timeliness required to do so. And so I think this is, this is a very well-thought-out and very meaningful amendment. And I agree with it. I want to proffer the one caveat, Madam Speaker. Exactly what the mover of the amendment has said is exactly what many, most, especially the movers of this bill were saying when it was first introduced. That we, we would have thought that this body, regardless of what body it was, would have moved with alacrity maybe for the first 120 days to simply have a short meeting with the governor or representatives here at the legislature and pass along the resolution, which is how this body speaks in, in full support of what the administration was doing because of the nature. Madam Speaker, this time, I'm going to ask for a one-minute recess so that I can discuss with the mover to caveat that this emergency that we're currently in, that's being declared, would be 30 days, and any subsequent would be 90 days. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
I will allow the moment's recess. Lieutenant Sais, Senator Guahein is back from recess. Senator Duñez, you still have the floor on the inquiry.
Yes, Madam Speaker. So in consultation with the mover of the amendment, and I am in, I am in agreement with this amendment. And so I will withdraw any potential caveats to this amendment. And I want to rise in support of the amendment and thank the mover of the amendment. This is Masim, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. We will allow the amendment. Speaker, I apologize. Senator Nelson still had the floor. Unless she wants to proffer the amendment, it hasn't been proffered yet.
Yes, Madam Speaker, I'd like to proffer the amendment where we change on line seven, page two, from 30 days, cross that out and put 90 days.
On the amendment, Vice Speaker, did you want to just read the whole thing down, just for clarity, for the record, please?
Yes, Madam Speaker. So this is to amend an area in Section 3, Subsection 19405 Bravo of Chapter 19, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, is hereby amended to read, "Bravo, automatic termination notwithstanding any other provision of this chapter, the declaration of a state of public health emergency shall be terminated automatically after," cross out 30 and put 90 days, "unless renewed by Illes et Guahein under the same standards and procedures set forth in this article. Any such renewal shall also be terminated automatically after," cross out 30 and put 90 days, "unless renewed by the Illes et Guahein under the same standards and procedures set forth in this article."
And allow legal, ma'am?
And yes, may I please allow, ask legal to make any technical corrections as necessary.
Legal bureau is authorized to make technical corrections if necessary. On the amendment, Speaker Teres Telleri, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to amend that amendment. First of all, I want to say I support the amendment. It, I have the utmost respect for what the governor has done for us in this pandemic. She has, for the first time, implemented a law that was put in place, as you described 20 years ago, never used. We never faced anything like this. And she was able to take it and use it for the first time. And it requires, most of the law requires us to create a plan. And we watched Linda Di Norsey and others from GMH and all over the island, really, scramble together to create this plan and to try to stand up what we would do in case COVID came to Guam. And I remember those days so clearly, but they seem a lifetime ago, right? After all we've been through, but it's, it's a very unique law. And, and I want to say she was very bold in some of her actions. And so I just, I just want to say, I commend her for that. And a governor has to be bold in, in actions when you're facing something like this. And we've seen all across the states, you know, that governors acting in all different kinds of ways, thinking what, you know, using their powers to the best of their ability, how they're going to, you know, help their people. And so I do want to commend the governor for that. But I do support this amendment. I think it makes the bill better, that we allow the 90 days for an immediate health emergency, just because we have seen, based on our experience, that, you know, 90 days, we're just, we're just beginning to get a handle on it. But, and that would give them time to come to the legislature, you know, and with some kind of either, you know, information or plan going forward to, to keep us informed. I would just like to amend that amendment. And the second 90 days, so the renewal periods, I would limit that to 30 days, Madam Speaker. I think if that would, that would serve better the intention of consultation with the legislature and keeping both branches well informed.
Thank you, Speaker Telleri. Colleagues, the amendment to the amendment is to change the word 90 back to 30.
On the On the renewal portion only.
On the, on the second
Yes.
90 days, it's back to 30, just on the second to the last line. On the amendment to Majority Leader's main amendment, anyone wishing to speak? If not, are there any objections to that? Seeing or hearing none, motion carries. On the TCN amendment, as amended, anyone else wishing to speak? If not, Majority Leader, would you like to close her call for the motion? The vote on the motion?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Nothing further.
Are there any objections to this amendment as proffered by Majority Leader Senator Nelson, as amended? Seeing or hearing no objections? Motion carries. Majority Leader, you still have the floor. Vice, Main Speaker Telleri, you're still Vice, Main Speaker Terlai, you are recognized on the main bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I support the intent of Bill 11 to increase transparency with executive decisions made to extend a public health state of emergency by mandating consultation with the legislature to ensure that such action is justified and to prevent misuse of the expansive authority granted to governors during emergencies by Chapter 19 of Title 10, Guam Code annotated. Nothing in this bill affects the powers of the governors or the agencies pursuant to the Organic Act or all of our other laws. It only affects the powers of the governor pursuant to Chapter 19 to declare an emergency pursuant to Chapter 19 of Title 10. It was just last term in response to the growing concerns of our community waiting weeks for some economic relief to feed their families, pay their bills, keep the roofs over their heads during this extremely stressful and difficult period, and unhappy with the lack of information coming from their government leadership that all the members of the legislature united together to pass Bill 333-35 relative to rapid and transparent implementation of federal and local assistance programs related to COVID-19. We witnessed countless letters to the governors and members of the cabinet asking for clarity on the administration's plan at that time to purchase more tests, to provide PPEs, to expedite economic relief for those unemployed, and to advise how the $129 million in federal relief will be prioritized during this crisis. Bill 333, amongst other things, was a demand for increased transparency and accountability on expenditures and agreements made by the executive branch. Bill 333 was initially vetoed by the governor, but overridden by the 35th Guam Legislature. It was perplexing at that time as to why the legislature, a co-equal branch of government and representative of the people of Guam, would be denied sometimes basic information or told to submit a FOIA. The last CARES expenditure report was in October. They were mandated to be made monthly. We've only received these twice as a legislature. We've not received the final report, to my knowledge, even though, per the media, all the money is spent. The governor stands to receive $661 million in additional CARES money from reports from Congress. From all indications, none of these funds, or the receipt of these funds, is not contingent on anything in Chapter 19 of our Title 10 in this one particular law. It's not contingent on the declaration of a health emergency according to Chapter 19. And it's not a receipt of those funds, from what I can tell, are not going to be affected by this bill. Congress does not ask us what our laws look like before they passed those relief packages. What might be affected by this bill is how we move forward in recovery and how we allocate the $661 million. And it might affect who on Guam will be taken care of and who won't be. I think it's a very legitimate question for the legislature to be involved in because it is the legislature who's going to have to allocate remaining government of Guam funds as necessary to those who are not covered by federal funds. The testimony that was received in support of Bill 11 during the public hearing echoed these same concerns for answers from the government on decisions that appear inconsistent and without justification that have directly impacted the livelihoods of thousands of people who have lost their jobs or who work unsustainable reduced hours and the closure of businesses during this COVID-19 pandemic. I've said many times in this session hall and in the community that transparency and providing information to the people of Guam is the only way we can make the government more trustworthy, efficient, and more responsive to the needs of the people. It's particularly essential during a public health emergency that the administration and the government of Guam is upfront about its plans and that these plans are based on data, facts, and are consistently applied. The legislature, as a body, should hear directly from the governor the findings that create an emergency and to what extent on an ongoing basis, especially after now the 90 days of initial response. We've seen that business organizations are kept in the loop in meetings, in economic advisory councils, and certain physicians are kept in the loop by physicians advisory councils. And I just believe it is appropriate that the legislature, who represents the people of Guam, are also kept in the loop about the government's planning and so that we are able to explain as well to the people of Guam and to support these efforts and mostly to explain why we are doing things the way we are doing things. That has been, I think, you know, in our efforts to assist, that is always the greatest challenge, that we have to know the whys in order to be able to explain to people who are questioning us, why are we doing it that way? Why is the governor doing that? And I just think we can help in that effort. I think most importantly, nothing in this bill prevents a governor from acting in good faith pursuant to the Organic Act. The Organic Act powers to supervise and control the executive branch, to transfer funds, to procure on an emergency basis, to act swiftly, to establish, maintain, and operate public health services in Guam, including hospitals, dispensaries, and quarantine stations at such places in Guam as may be necessary, and to promulgate quarantine and sanitary regulations for the protection of Guam against the importation and spread of disease. Nothing in this bill affects that power. This bill only limits that very special powers that we were given, that were given to the governor in Chapter 19 and were given to the public health authority. And Chapter 19 actually gives most of the power to the public health authority. Every provision in it says the public authority shall have this power. The public authority shall have this power, except for the declaration of an emergency, termination of an emergency, and the transfer of funds, which it authorizes the governor to do. But if you look at under Ten GCA 19403, what the governor's emergency's powers are, none of them is really unique outside of what she's already authorized by the Organic Act, except perhaps, to me, this one. It says, "Through an executive order, she may suspend the provisions of any regulatory statute prescribing procedures for conducting local business or the orders, rules, and regulations of any government of Guam agency to the extent that strict compliance with the same would prevent, hinder, or delay necessary action, including emergency purchases by the public health authority to respond to the public health emergency or increase the health threat to the population." And this one provision is exactly why I think legislative consultation on freezing of laws, rules, and regulations or bypassing them, I think that's exactly when consultation is absolutely appropriate, not just for the legislature, but for the people of Guam to know exactly why we are doing these types of rule bypassing or law bypassing. So for those purposes, and because I believe she retains governor powers through the Organic Act to continue to protect us and that consultation would be in the best interest of the people of Guam after 90 days, I support this bill. But I would like to make one amendment, Madam Speaker, and that is to delete the findings of the bill. I do not agree necessarily with all the findings, how they are written here, and I would just like to delete them. I don't think they're necessary. And I think, in fact, I disagree with this one line that says, specifically, "The governor has, while acting in an arbitrary and capricious fashion, exercised both executive and legislative powers." I just don't believe she's acted in an arbitrary and capricious fashion. I believe she's acted in very good faith and tried to protect the people of Guam. But I still believe that the legislature, that all of policymaking and policy rearranging and exemptions from policy would benefit from consultation with the legislature. So I thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Speaker Terlai. On the amendment to delete the legislative findings, an intent. Anyone wishing to speak on that? If not, is there an objection? Seeing or hearing? No objection? Motion carries. Anybody else on the main motion? Anybody else on the main motion? If not, Senator Frank Blas, you will be recognized on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for this opportunity. And I want to thank the previous speakers because they brought to light some issues that may be contentious and some cases also agreeable. I want to thank the movers of the amendments that actually strengthened the bill, I believe, so that it becomes more palatable for individuals, for colleagues. But I want to also reiterate the same thing that this bill doesn't usurp the power of the governor necessary in dealing with emergencies. You know, it's interesting enough that some things that were brought up in testimony, not in this testimony, but here on the floor, were things that I can directly relate to. And you know, I share in the frustration and the concerns and the anger that many in our community felt and unfortunately, in some cases, continue to feel in how we're dealing with this emergency. I don't think there is any emergency in modern time, in our modern history that had such an impact and devastation than this has. And I think that initially, when the laws were drafted, when legislation was drafted to first give the governor this authority under Chapter 19, that the possibility of an emergency lasting as long as this one has lasted could ever occur. You know, as a homeland security advisor at one time, you know, and the lead person in multitude of emergencies, yes, one of the first things you want to do is get through it so that we can recover. One of the, I guess, saving graces about those emergencies that I had to deal with was, it came and it went. This one came and lingers. And as it continued to linger, there was continual fear. Compare this to a typhoon, and you'll probably fear no more than 24 hours. This one is multiplied by 1,000. But that said too, Madam Speaker, you know, when legislation like was necessary so that you can limit or you can provide and, you know, the chief executive, the authority to make those decisions quickly, it was for those type of emergencies. You were right, Madam Chair, in your testimony that, you know, back in 2002, there was a collaborative effort. But it was for an emergency, not at this magnitude. Even then, if you can recall, there was concerns about how the governor was was exercising his power. And it was this body that said, hey, we manage the purse strings, remember? I think that was a fact that was necessary for us to make sure that we get this whole, that whole idea into concert. And I appreciate it. And I agree with you, ma'am. I agree with a lot of the concerns that you brought up and many of the colleagues brought up. And I agree that it was this body that had to work very collaboratively, leave out all the partisan politics, and do what's right for the people of Guam. I agree. And that's what we're asking for here. You see, because in the onset of this pandemic, in this emergency that we're in right now, I was at a different role. I was at a role where I did not have the responsibilities that we have today. But because of prior experience, I trusted. I wanted to trust that this august body was going to have my back. And quite honestly, it didn't. I guess because at that time, this body didn't realize that out there, there were people who were standing at line at 2:30 in the morning so they can get, make sure they have that opportunity to get a bag of food to bring home to their family because this was in July, the last time this individual saw a paycheck was in March. That people were feared. Okay, what are those necessary steps other than holding myself up in my house and being subjected to roadblocks? How that was going to protect me? How all these mandates that were put on executive order after executive order was going to help me? With no explanation other than this is how you're going to follow it? How an individual who comes to me and says, "Explain this to me." How an individual who comes to me and says, explain this to me? How is it that I can't go to a bar to get a beer, but I can go to a massage parlor next door? You finish that sentence, or you finish that question. If we're concerned, you know, about this body having now that extra power to be able to negate, yes, you're right, it's in the law. We could do this at any time, but it takes eight. I pray that we never have to go through another disaster like this again. And maybe that this section of the law, if it becomes law, that this section really doesn't have to be exercised. But this body has a responsibility to the community. In the coming months, there's going to be a lot of questions. And maybe while we don't want to get into the weeds of the whole thing of how it was done, but maybe how it was spent. A couple of days ago, we dealt with legislation that put us in a position that we had to make a decision or we could potentially lose out in a billion dollars' worth of construction. Something that should have been done earlier had there been collaboration with this body. We're probably going to do more of that in the next coming months. We're going to have to sit here during the budget, and we're going to try to figure how to squeeze a nickel out of the two bleeding pennies. First, we have to make the penny bleed. We're going to have to find ways to be able to get people whole again. That's what this bill provides. Lastly, Madam Speaker, and if you provide me some latitude, notwithstanding the standing rules, about discussing measures that have not yet been deliberated in this body? This is in no way an affirmation of the process and the thoughts or the justification for another piece of legislation that will be considered. This is about an emergency? This is about the transparency? Oh, by the way, can I ask this body? Because as a private citizen, many months ago, I was told that there's going to be a monthly report on how monies are spent. Last time I checked, when it was promised in April, today is February, there's only been two reports. And we're going to sit tight and not think that that's not our responsibility? To reference the letter that was passed out to us yesterday, this legislative body is not and will not go into the operations or affect the operations of the frontliners. You have a job to do, and you're going to do it. We're just here to make sure that you have the resources for it. We're just here to make sure that there's the justification for it. That's what this bill is for. I respect the governor and her responsibilities. I applaud her for what's, you know, and I continue to pray for her. We all do. There's no malicious intent in anybody in here to usurp her just to make her look, because if she looks bad on this, we all are going to suffer. We just want to, there's questions that need to be. They made the promises. They gave the assurances. We're just holding them to it. So, Madam Chair, to my colleagues, let's get, you know, as was said before, we're in this together? No. Let's do this together. Thank you, Madam Chair, for this opportunity to speak. I am in support of Bill 11-36. I'm asking my colleagues for their support as well.
Juan Pobeto, Senator Blas, anyone else on the main motion? Anyone else? If not, Senator Chris Duñez, you may close.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a few brief comments on closing, but there's a couple of things that we need to do with this bill via two amendments. I would like to move those amendments at this time. One is for clarity, and one is basically just legal housekeeping.
We'll take one amendment at a time. Is it uploaded, Senator Duñez?
Yes, they are both uploaded, Madam Speaker.
Clerk assured me it's uploaded with a nod on her head. Go ahead and proceed on the first one.
So, Madam Speaker, it was discussed that the bill seems to lack a mechanism for the legislature to speak, although it's commonly known that we speak via resolution. But to be abundantly clear within the bill, this amendment is amending Section 3 on Page 2. And the amendment, I believe, is on line, I think it's on line 6. But anyways, I'll just read it. Where it struck out on the second paragraph of Imagulah in Guam, the governor, after that, the simple words, "by resolution of ilegistatura in Guam, under the same standards and procedures as set forth." So the underline there is the "by resolution of", meaning we would do this extension by resolution.
Senator Duñez, one moment. Before I ask anybody, I just want to clear with the clerks. Just give me a moment. Colleagues, I just wanted to make sure that we understood it. I'll read this along with the clerk. And it just says, because there has been an amendment that has been made, so it will read, "Any such renewal shall also be terminated automatically after 30 days unless renewed by resolution of ilegistatura in Guam under the same standards and procedures set forth in this article." Everybody get that? I just wanted to make sure that that is included based on the intent. The author of the amendment, am I saying that correctly?
That's correct. And so we don't have the two "buys", we just have "by resolution of." Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Yes, and right, it's in two places, right?
That's correct.
Okay, and then can you just also allow Legal Bureau for any technical?
Sure, yes. And of course, Legal would be able to clean up any language that's just legal and technical issues. But other than that, this is the amendment and the substance of the amendment.
On the amendment, are there anyone wishing to speak? Are there any objections? Are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none, motion carries. Senator Duñez, you still have the floor. You have another amendment.
Yeah, Madam Chair. And I know we have folks patiently waiting, so this is just something to clean up, and then I'll send the bill down. So to clean up language, once again, that Legal has found redundant. The other amendment is there on the website. It's line 12, page 2. And essentially, what we're just going to do is just remove the "such termination by the Guam Legislature shall override any renewal of Imagulah in Guam", the governor, since the body of the bill has already done that. So we're just going to remove that striked-out section just to clean the bill up.
Colleagues, the author of the amendment is adding a new section to the bill and then adding to the quote. Am I correct?
Actually, I'm removing the language, the striked-out language. And this is by recommendation of Legal. It's line 12, page 2. And that is just simply to remove the striked portion of the bill just to clean it up. And that was recommended by Legal.
On the amendment, are there anyone wishing to speak? If not, is there an objection? Seeing or hearing none, motion carries. Senator Duñez, you still have the floor.
Madam Speaker, I had some words with regard to the testimony on the floor, but I don't think they're necessary. I just want to say I appreciate the dialogue from my colleagues. I know we have folks patiently waiting on another bill to come into the hall. And so this time, Madam Speaker, I humbly request that Bill 11-36COR be placed in the third reading file for consideration of the vote.
On that motion to place Bill Number 11-36 as amended to the third reading voting file, are there any objections? Are there any objections?
We will now proceed to the Committee of the Whole on Bill 13-36. We rose from the Committee of the Whole yesterday temporarily to proceed with the other bills, and now we have the panel available today. So Senator Rigel will be chairing the Committee of the Whole this morning.
Madam Speaker, may I? Yes, Madam Speaker, given that we didn't begin the session, the Committee of the Whole is at 10 o'clock as stated. I've been informed that the head of the Guam Board of Nurse Examiners is no longer available to testify at this moment. And she is the one that is entrusted to carry out Section 2 of the bill, so her testimony is very vital in her presence. May I respectfully request that we reconvene the Committee of the Whole at 1 o'clock to allow the Guam Board of Nurse Examiners to attend? They are, in fact, working nurses, and this has been the difficulty with rescheduling. So if we may reconvene at 1 o'clock, I respectfully request.
My only concern with that is the other members of the panel. If we can confirm, Senator Rigel, whether they would also be available at that time? The other members?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Let me see if they will be available at that time. Thank you.
We'll take a two-minute recess. Senator Rigel, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. After some consultation, we found out that really, the only people available at this time for the panel is the Office of Finance and Budget. Lester Carlson, as well as Director Ed Byrne, are not available this morning. We're trying to determine why they're not available. We think they may be in health negotiations for the health insurance contract this morning. So, we're working to determine their availability and we're hoping to have them available this afternoon. So, with that, I'd like to make a motion that we recess until this afternoon so that we can get all the people necessary into the Committee of the Whole. 1 p.m. this afternoon.
All right, we are recessed until 1 p.m.